Oh, here. Over to her.
Yeah.
Echol.
She's here.
Oh, that's here. Tenny.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Motion to excuse, uh, Councilperson Reynolds?
Second. All those in favor of excusing Mr. Reynolds, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, so a motion to approve the minutes for the February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four regular council meeting.
Tell them. Second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of February the twelfth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four regular council meeting?
Tell them. Needs to be as amended. I hope there's health and safety.
Oh, yeah, 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 I have to amend the agenda to include the health and safety committee report.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Committee reports, uh, recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, board minutes, board meeting minutes, Rossford Parks Recreation Committee for two thirteen twenty-four. In attendance, Toby Ledesma, myself, Brennan Reynolds, Dan Wilburn, Carol Kelsey, Caroline Kelsey-Eckel, and Terry McNeigh, who is the new representative from the Board of Education. Meant to order five thirty P M., capital improvement projects. The concession stand and restroom building is close to completion. Just need a final inspection. Each project is near complete and just touching up some final details. That's park equipment. The board was updated on the playground equipment that is set to be installed at Veterans Park. There will be a new zip track installed and new playground structures. Both pieces are all-inclusive. There are also some new swinging benches. Capital, two thousand and twenty-four capital improvement. The board had discussion on the two thousand and twenty-four capital improvement plans, recreation department plans. I had placed for a splash pad behind the recreation center. With renovations to the fountain planned by plan, they came up with a second option for discussion. This included renovations to the rec center such as new flooring, new workout equipment, gymnasium upgrades, and new doors and locks. It also included some park equipment, gymnasium, pardon, park equipment positions such as beach street, park playground equipment, and shaded benches at Veterans Park. The board said it would like to see designs for the newfound before proceeding. Two thousand and twenty-four levy discussion. Both parks and levees, parks and recreational levees will be renewed at one mill levies. The board discussed the upcoming levy and what they would like to see for capital improvements. Mr. Ledesma from Jeff County, proposed focusing on developing Indian Hills property into a park. He would like to see a facility with restrooms and a meeting space that could be utilized for rentals and programming as well as walking trails in the area. The board also discussed campaign steps moving forward. Program pull-ups basketball ended this past weekend and had a hundred and two participants. Registration is open for soccer, softball, and spring break camp. Voting will take place at the recreation center at three nineteen. The building will be closed to members at that time, however, wheels on wheels and the senior center will still be able to operate. Meeting was adjourned at six thirty P M.
Okay, any comments or questions?
All right, uh, health and safety. Thank you, sir. Those in attendance at the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting held on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, five P M. were committee chairperson, committee, uh, committee member Larry Overdorff, committee member Chris Heben, police chief Todd Kitzler, police chief, or fire chief, sorry, Joshua R., Mayor Neil A. McKenna the third, law director Kevin Heben, and city administrator Allison Murray. The meeting began with Todd, Police Chief Todd Kitzler giving an update on mobile and portable radios and that they had a quote for configuration upgrade. This upgrade was not planned or budgeted for this year but is required to maintain communications with Lucas County. The police department has money in their forfeiture account that can be used for this upgrade. Next, police, uh, Police Chief Kitzler discussed being approached by Amazon wishing to inquire about donating funds to bring back the canine control. If this program were to move forward, it would require one officer with a take-home vehicle. Chief Kitzler continued by discussing the possibility of a drone program. R P D is working on the quote with Exxon for a drone program. This type of program is beneficial in the recruitment and retention of officers. This program could also be paid with for, with forfeiture account funds. An update on the last four flock cameras is waiting an O dot approval but should be coming soon. Chief Kitzler informed the committee that the current flock cameras have been outfitted with more battery packs to get them through low periods of sunlight. The fourteen cameras that are currently up and online read nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred plates in the last thirty days, and R P D have continued to have success in identifying suspects after a crime has been committed thanks to the use of these cameras. Chief Kitzler then provided an update on the citizen complaint from the last city council meeting regarding crosswalks being blocked at the corner of Bergen and State Route sixty-five. The issue was investigated and found to be a non-issue. He also stated he had been monitoring that intersection and has not observed any violations. Chief Kitzler's last item was a discussion on encouraging R P D officers to participate in programs through the city's E A P provider to allow officers a chance to talk about any issues they may be feeling at a mandated deployment once a year. Chief spoke on how important it was to give officers an opportunity for counseling due to the stress of their positions. Fire chief Josh Gerard had no updates. The meeting adjourned at five fifteen.
Okay, any comments or questions on the state committee report? Reports of the mayor and administrator Allison, do you have anything this evening?
I do have a couple things tonight, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I'd like to remind Rossford's citizens that the city is hosting a shredding event on Friday, April the nineteenth, from ten A M. to one P M. here at City Hall. Uh, you don't even have to get out of your car, bring your boxes that you'd like to have shredded. If you pull right around to the back, we will have our public goods guys lift them out of your car and lift them over to you as shredding. So if you're interested in that, you have questions, please call City Hall. The second item I have tonight is we have been asked by Perryburg Township, they've reached out to all the neighboring communities requesting a letter of support for their C max grant application, which they would like to do a roundabout at State Route one ninety-nine, Dunbridge Road and Five Point Road. Now, that's located in Perryburg Township. If you're, uh, familiar at all, this is where it's circled in red, it's where one ninety-nine comes together with Dunbridge Road and comes together with Five Point Road. Uh, this letter would not cost anything to the city and it would not obligate the city in any way to anything. It would just be to show that Perryburg Township Project has the support of the local communities in this area. So I would be asking council tonight to, uh, do a voice vote in order to allow me to write the letter of support for Perryburg Township's grant.
Okay, uh, just a couple things. One, I want to wish the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's a couple other things, but.
Oh, go ahead.
We need a council to authorize the. Do we need to make a, make a motion?
Yes.
I, uh, yeah, I'll second the motion.
Who made it?
Uh, Zach made it by second. Mr. Watrow?
All those in favor of the motion to, uh, authorize the administrator to do a letter of support for the Perryburg Township Roundabout, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item I have is Danny's Cafe has reached out to the city with new signage requests. Uh, they wish to do murals, and you can see here, this is the side of their new building. It would say, "Welcome to Historic Rossford, established in eighteen ninety-eight." Um, and it has like a flag in the background. So that's the mural that they would like to put on the side of the new building that is being constructed at this time.
And if I may, just for the council members, our quote requires that any murals installed within the city have to be approved by council. It doesn't go through the B Z A or planning commission, so that's council's decision. Start.
Will it obstruct traffic flow?
Can you see it?
I can see it. If it won't obstruct traffic flow, I'm fine. Exactly. I mean, there's, I, I get different questions every day, so I'm fine with it. So I'll make the motion to pass it.
Second.
I mean, it's not bright pink.
No, or something like that. Sorry, it's not blurry on the eyes if you're gonna drive into the bay or the boulevard or somebody crosses the street.
Vote on the motion to allow, uh, Danny's to have a mural on the side of their new building? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the next item is he has another request for a mural on the front of the building, which would be this bulldog. Trying to make it big enough that you can see it. It would be on the water tower feature on the front. This is the second mural request.
Motion passed. Second.
All those in favor, uh, of the motion to allow a second mural on the, uh, tower? And Danny's, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item, he is requested to have a marquee sign on the parapet out front. Obviously, this isn't the exact sign, but it would look like this and it would say Danny's Cafe. It would go where? On the parapet out front, which is here.
Motion passed. Second.
All those in favor of the motion to allow a parapet sign on Danny's, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Something about that, Allison. The fact that, you know, if we pass stuff for Brad and Danny's, it's, the city's not doing him any favors. Nobody's putting as much money into that quarter as he has in the last two years.
And his things are.
And I appreciate everything he's done now, so that's all I, I wanted to say.
Thank you. The next item is there was some concern at the last council meeting because the new sketch of Danny's showed a different looking fire pit than what was originally, uh, authorized by you guys last fall. So this is the one that you guys approved last fall, and because this is only about twenty-four inches high, they were afraid that someone might, you know, stumble and it might be dangerous. So they have actually updated them and would like council to approve. This is thirty-six inches high, it's stable height, um, they would like these to be approved rather than the ones you originally approved last fall.
Are they both materials with natural gas?
They are. They're natural gases. I'm assuming those are bolted down, so they're. They are, but they are also, they can also be removed if the city needs to do work there.
You'd like a cigar off of them?
I can't answer that.
Sorry, I mean, they're inside the gate, right?
Yes.
A motion to approve the change.
I'll start with that.
All those in favor of allowing the fire pit change at Danny's, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the very last, thank you, the very last item I have tonight is last year in two thousand and twenty-three, the city was awarded a grant from O dot to resurface Glenwood Road from Mandell to just north of Buck Road. Uh, the bids are going to, they're being, that project is being advertised right now. The visit will be opened on March the twentieth, but the sale date deadline for, we have to have it done and back to O D A by March twenty-ninth, which means there's one council meeting in between when we open the bids and when we have to have the information back to O D A. So that will be, require an emergency. So I'm letting you know what the project is now, but I won't have the bidders and their amounts until the meeting on March twenty-sixth.
When, when would they want to kick that off, do you?
Um, I think as soon as possible.
Okay.
What's this, many times?
Um, about four weeks because it's just resurfacing, and if we get the weather, then we should be able to do it within four week period. It's a three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar project, of which the city share is twenty percent, or seventy-four thousand eight hundred. And if you have any questions about it at any time, just let me know what you do expect to have in ordinance on the agenda at the last council meeting in March that we will need to pass as an emergency that night, but I won't have the name of the lowest investor in the price until after the twentieth. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Allison, sorry, that's the same scale that they, that they did on Lime City before.
Similar, yes.
Deal twenty in version.
Yes, similar, yes.
Thank you.
I'll take the fifth. Um, I just had a couple things. Uh, one, I want to wish, uh, the Rossford Eighty Good Boys Basketball Team good luck tonight. Uh, they're playing for the league championship over at Lake. And number two, uh, we've been invited as usual to the twenty-ninth annual Wood County Economic Development, uh, dinner. That will be held April eighteenth at the Hilton Garden Inn. Uh, cocktails from six to seven, and the dinner and program is from, uh, seven to nine. So if any county council or the administration would like to go to that, let Allison know, and, uh, um, you're welcome to, uh, bring your significant other also. That's all I have. Mr. Watrow, is there any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mayor.
Okay, introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen by title only?
Tell them. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-four dash fourteen is an ordinance authorizing the administration to consent to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Director's final findings and orders related to the Wales Road landfill and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison?
Thirty years ago, we cla, we, uh, closed the landfill that was out on Wales Road. For the last thirty years, we have had to monitor weekly, we've had to monitor the groundwater and the leachate and also the explosive gas. Uh, we are at the end of the thirty-year period now, and O, uh, P P A has gone in and they have evaluated everything, and they said we're good on the leachate, we're good on the groundwater, but they are requesting that we continue to monitor the explosive gas because they found trace evidence in the explosive gas, so they would like us to continue to monitor that for the next five years.
Go ahead, Karen.
Can, can we get a copy of the findings? Absolutely.
Are there expected costs for this?
Uh, I think the costs will go down substantially because instead of testing for three things, we're now.
Would we like to make a motion?
We'll suspend the second and third reading of twenty twenty-four fourteen.
So, uh, second. Anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No. All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare twenty twenty-four fourteen an emergency measure.
Second. All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Vote for adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen. Over to her.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Heben. Owen.
Aye.
Tenny.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen by title only?
Tell them. Action.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-four dash fifteen is an ordinance authorizing the administration to dispose of certain surplus property not needed for any municipal purpose and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
This is the old Marina Pump House pump. Uh, we got a brand new one with, uh, new amenities down at the Marina for this year. So this is the old one, and there is some issues with the motor. So, um, we would like to be able to remove that from the down at Marina and keep it at Wales Road and then put it on GoDeals or whatever we wish to do.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No. All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to declare ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen an emergency.
Uh, second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen. Heben.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Overdorff.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Tenny.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen by title only?
Tell them. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, an ordinance amending supplemental number three, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-four, ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, passed by ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventy-three. This is the first reading.
Allison.
Thank you. So there are three items that included the ordinance that require funding. Um, the first item is, uh, seventy-seven thousand for the Glenwood Road resurfacing project. Um, that was approved by council in January. The next item is the Hoffman Road reconstruction, which is part of the Winter Drive project. Uh, that'll be about one hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then the last item that we are appropriating funds for is the landfill gas monitoring, uh, that Allison mentioned in the previous ordinance. Um, we're adding twenty thousand dollars to the budget for that. Happy to answer any questions?
Didn't we transfer money?
We transferred funds into the landfill closure fund, but we didn't add any money to the budget for the, the, the funds had to go into that fund first, and now we're appropriating the money from there.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
All right.
Nice second.
Okay, anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to, um, declare an emergency. Second. No.
You don't need it, with an appropriation, you don't need an emergency.
Oh, sorry.
That's right.
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. Echol.
Aye.
Overdorff.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Tenny.
Aye.
Introduction of resolutions, any this evening, Mr. Watrow? None. Okay, council remarks, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is gonna be a selfish one, I would like to thank or congratulate my sister, Sarah Toth, for being the first female police chief in Sylvania Township history. I'm very proud of my sister. She has not given me a pass on going through Sylvania Township, which I'm not proud of, but so proud of her. Um, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight to our council meeting, and, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Overdorff.
Happy, Mayor.
Second.
Um, good luck to the eighth grade boys' basketball team tonight. That's all, thank you.
This is Tenny.
Nothing.
Mr. Owen.
Special mention to, uh, Toby Ledesma and Alexa Owen and their staff for doing a good job with, um, the little pups basketball. Uh, always seems to be fun for my kids and other people's kids, so, uh, special mention to them.
Okay, Mr. Heben.
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, audience remarks.
Jeff F. one one seventy-seven, Hanley Avenue. I'd just like to, one thing, one comment I want to make is, uh, the comment Mr. Toth made about the special consideration down there. I just wonder, had I not brought it to the attention of council, um, about the fire pits, whether or not they would have installed the fire pits, and, but nothing would have been said.
Were you asking?
Well, I mean, what, are you asking me?
I'm asking everybody.
They could not have.
Because that would have shown the special. It was brought up in council tonight.
That would have been shown the special attention.
Okay, here's another thing. I'm gonna tell you this much.
All right.
When we talked the other day.
Uh-huh.
And you told me about, uh, unsafe.
Mm-hmm.
I sat on the corner there, I mean, 'cause I have, you know, all the time in the world. Um, I've been in construction for, before I was an inside house cat, I was a feral cat. Working in the construction trade.
That's fine.
They did nothing, nothing there was unsafe. I had talked to the contractor. OSHA deemed that there was nothing unsafe there.
At that day?
Yes.
Okay, that day, right.
So, that day, OSHA, and the con, and the contractor has never had any.
Or at, or at, by the time you, by the time you got there. By the time you got there.
And the contractor has never had any OSHA violations. So, I mean.
All right.
I, I mean, we could, we could play this all day long, Jeff.
But would he have called it to your attention that he was making a change, or would he have gone ahead, 'cause he already had them ordered? You see what I'm saying?
Okay.
Okay, you got my, you see what I'm saying?
I understand.
And at the time that the fire pits were approved.
Okay.
Nobody questioned the safety other than me.
Okay.
All right?
Well, it was brought up tonight, what, what more, I mean, what do you want us to do? Do you want us to shut them down, or do you want us to?
No, I'm not asking you to shut them down. Listen, I've said this once and I've said this a couple of times. I appreciate what he's doing to the corner.
Right.
I just think that there are a lot of things being overlooked because of who he is.
Who is he?
Mr. Morrison.
He's doing.
Who, who is he? You, what do you mean by that?
They're, they're.
Bob, Bob, all right. To you guys, he's, he's the hero, okay? To me, he's just another businessman who is being given freedom to do pretty much whatever he wants.
No, not at all.
He, he's worked very hard with our zoning department from day one. He's been very proactive, more proactive than a lot of contractors in town. He is, has, has had an open line of communication, asking questions, making sure everything's taken care of. Um, he's on top of everything.
But just so everybody knows, th- there's policy and procedures that you have to follow, and he's following them.
Okay.
Nobody's.
Does that in, does that include the three times that Ms. Murray lied to me and said that the sidewalks would be closed down twenty-four seven, and they never were?
I never lied to you about that, Mr. Aaron.
You told me they would, and they never were.
They are always closed.
First of all, we're, we're not gonna spend, we're not gonna spend all night on this.
All right, the other thing is, um, in regards to signs, the, uh, the sign that you're pointing, does that TV, the, the sign, uh, the, electric sign on the side of the building, does that meet code? Because I think our codes say no flashing signs. So is that a distraction?
Which electric sign are you talking about? Which electric sign?
The TV, the TV monitor on the side.
Faces Huntington.
Oh. The codes say no flashing signs, is that a flash, that's considered a flashing sign?
We'll look into it.
All right, and do TVs, are TVs considered a sign?
Do you have a sign permit for the TV in your living room?
No, but that's on the outside as a sign, and it's a distraction.
I've never heard anybody reference a television as a sign.
Okay, well, I'm just asking because I have a friend who's trying to put up a sound barrier, and they say that the sound barrier is a fence. So do we have that?
Is your friend trying to put up a sound barrier in the city of Rossford?
Yes.
Have him apply and we'll take a look at it.
Okay, but it's a defense.
I don't know, Jeff.
Because he's been instructed by the code department that it's a fence.
If he's instructed by our code department that it's a fence, then I would believe the code department here is.
All right, okay.
The, the people operating there are very competent.
I'm just doing a, I'm just doing a comparison, because if a, if a sound barrier is considered a fence, why wouldn't a TV that causes a distraction be a sign?
I can't even.
Does a, does a sound barrier look different than a fence? Hey, hold on, if you wanna speak, if you wanna, if you wanna speak, raise your hand.
He's been trying to get it done.
Mrs. Echol.
So, there's lots of different fence qualifiers. For example, shrubbery planted within a certain amount of inches along the property line that creates a barrier between you and your neighbor is considered a fence, so probably if he's putting it on the property line, it's probably considered a fence.
Oh, he'll put it on his property.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Mr. Owen.
Okay. I had to put a pool, I, I put a pool in.
Mm-hmm.
Required to put a fence in. If it looks like the fence that I put in, I would assume if it looks like a fence, it would be considered a fence. If it's four feet high, if it's six feet high, if it's eight feet high, and you can't see through it, or you can't pass through it, I would consider that a fence. So yes, as far as the sign down the street, I guess we would need to have, I would need to understand what is considered flashing. Is it a specific, is it a specific amount of flashing image?
Well, I can tell you, um, years ago, there was a Lotto sign in one of the buildings that was flashing, and they made it turn on steady. So if that was a distraction, it's considered a distraction.
I mean, the school had a sign that would change in front of it, the municipal building has a sign that changes in front of it that would meet, I would assume the same thing, so. the same thing, so.
Well, this was flashing, flashing. You know what I mean? It was just posting something. I think there's probably a problem with it. But the Lotto sign was flashing like this.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a strobing effect, I would see that that'd be the thing. If it's changing from one word to another word, I would not consider that to be flashing, but I would have to look at the ordinance and question.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Toth?
Hey, how was that different from the signs we have in the boulevard? Don't drink and drive, drop your phone, do this, that, or the other thing? I mean, it's not, I.
You know what? This is what revitalization looks like. There's not one person up here that hasn't heard a thousand times, they would like to see our downtown revitalized. And we have an individual that is spending his own money to make us better. To be quite honest, I find it a little offensive that every council meeting, somebody comes up and asks questions, that all they would have to do is pick up the phone or send an email to ask about instead of, instead of bashing a guy who's probably put over three million dollars into our downtown. To be quite honest, I wish I had a hundred Brad Morrisons in Rossford, Ohio. The guy's amazing, he is a philanthropist, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate him and his investment in our downtown. Anyone else?
Amy Burchall, one thirteen Bergen Street. Um, I agree Brad has done a lot on the corner there, but you talk about revitalization. Has city council or yourself thought about, we're bringing people into Rossford, where are people supposed to park? Where, Rossford is growing and downtown parking is not. I know you added that lot. People don't want to walk. I mean, I know it had good intentions, and I don't know how to get people to park there, but, you know, it's not just Danny's, it's Mo's, it's all, you know, then you've got the new bar down the street, there's no parking. And people, I don't know that it's the construction people that are, you know, doing whatever or causing, they're very courteous, they're clean. It's the people that are coming to go to Danny's or Mo's. They don't know where to park. They literally will like turn down the road and just, you see them, stop. And then they'll just block traffic because they don't know where to park, and then they'll just put it in reverse, or, I can't tell you how many times I'm sitting in my living room and I hear people laying on their horn because people, it's, they, they're not familiar with the area, you know, half the parking's blocked off because it, you know, he's, he's making it safe, so you don't want people walking in construction zone, but it's not just Brad or Danny's, it's the growth of Rossford, and there's no place for these people to park. So I just, one of those things that made me think about, I don't know, where people, I know you added that lot, Neil, but people don't, I mean, drive by there, there's nobody parking there because I wouldn't want to have to walk all the way down there, but I don't know, just a thought as a person that lives in the neighborhood by downtown, people just don't know where to park. So maybe look into something like that, adding parking or something for people.
Gotcha, thank you. Anyone else?
Diane Wolf, two sixty-four Jennings. Um, back to the flashing signs. I have a huge one in my front yard. I don't have an issue with it. I also don't have an issue with this flashing sign at Danny's. I mean, as I approach, I can see they're congratulating the local kids and their successes and advertising their events at their bar. I don't have a problem with that. I do request some consideration when we put the speed bumps back in on Jennings Road that lead up, or that, that come after my flashing sign in my front yard. Could we space them out the whole block? Because when they come to my sa, my street at the corner, they're going upwards of forty miles an hour before they even think about the flashing sign, and they still ignore it, you know? I, it was a great effort, it was worth a try, but they're still running that stop sign, they're still flying around that corner. Some of them are locals, some of them are visitors, I don't care who they are. There's children walking up and down the street to the park, there's kids riding their bikes, there's families walking together. It's a dangerous, dangerous thing, and the speed bumps may slow them down, but I watch a lot of people fly past those too. And I know we've done many, many, many things to try, and I thank Todd, and I really thank everybody for making an effort to slow it down, but that first block is very long. They take a long time to get up to their speed, and then if they stop, they're slamming on their brakes. I also have concerns with what's happening down Hoffman. My block is four houses long on one side and three houses on the other side. They're going thirty-five, forty miles an hour coming up to Hoffman before they turn and head to the park. I'm asking, I'm urging for more patrols and maybe spacing those, those speed bumps out, and especially if we're adding, I heard a rumor, I don't know that this is true, that Hoffman will be having sidewalks. That makes me even more nervous because that means that many more kids will be walking back and forth and to and from, and there's a lot of people that ignore pedestrians on my street. So I'm just asking that something, some effort above and beyond what we've already done, and I don't mind the flashing signs, so, and it's in my front yard, I can see it. At two in the morning, when I have to take my dog out, it lights up. If I'm sitting in my living room, I can see it through my picture window. So what? It's not a big deal. But I would urge that we consider putting those speed bumps in the first block too and not just toward, between the river and Hoffman Road.
I'll get with Chief Kitzler and Mr. Audet here in the next week or so.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Toth.